But we'll be rotated with each question. Electronic timing on the screen will alert candidates to time remaining for answering the question. After the initial three questions, we'll open the floor to audience questions, which can be submitted via the Zoom window. You can click on the Q and A button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen, where you should see "Submit a Question" prompt. These questions may be addressed to one, two, or all of the candidates. We'll address as many of these questions as time allows. Again, candidates will have two minutes each to answer the question. So that we can conclude by 8:30, at approximately 8:20, or when questions are completed, we will give the candidates two minutes for closing remarks. As you have seen on the screen, this forum is being recorded and will be available on both the League of Women Voters and Chestertown websites following the forum. Now, it is my great pleasure to introduce your candidates for, and they may raise their hand, Ward One, Robert Miller, and Tim O'Brien from Ward One. Ward Three, we have Edward Gallo and Jose Madrano. Now, let's get started with introductions by the candidates, as I said, starting in alphabetical order. So our first candidate to provide an introduction is Edward Gallo.
Well, hello. First of all, I'd like to thank League of Women Voters. Honestly, it's a real honor to be able to talk to you because for 100 years, the League has been doing this sort of thing. It's wonderful work you guys do. My name is Edward Gallo. People know me as Ted. You may have seen me around town coaching soccer or T-ball over the years. I've moved my family to Chestertown in the western shore in 2009. And in that time, I've done everything that I can to try and contribute to the community, try and make this a good place, not only to raise a family, but to retire. And in doing that, I spent a couple of years working for the Historic District Commission in town. And that's what kind of introduced me to the way things in Chestertown work. There's a lot of things going on here in Chestertown that a lot of people aren't really aware of. And in talking to people around town, I became aware of the fact that a lot of people around town don't really feel like the town works for them in a lot of ways. And I wanted to be an advocate for them, for someone, if someone wants to come to Chestertown to move, to open a business, to do any of the other wonderful things that you can do here, that they have someone fighting for them in their corner. The town needs to be seen as an asset, someone that's going to help you grow, someone that's going to help you do whatever it is you want to come here and do. So that's one of the reasons that I got into this race. The other reason is I think that we got here in a very draconian kind of way, but the COVID has kind of rearranged everything that we've done with our world. And we're at a golden opportunity right now to pounce on that, to make Chestertown in the next 10 years be an even better place than it already is.
Thank you very much, Ted. Next for introductions is Jose Madrano.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to League of Women Voters here in Chestertown. Thank you to you, Ms. Lynn, for moderating the event. As you said, my name is Jose Madrano, and I immigrated here from Central America in 1961. I lived in Washington, DC at that time. I was a three-year-old. And prior to coming to Chestertown, we were living in Fairfax, Virginia. And that's where we decided to relocate and move here in 2003. I'm the proud father of three adult grown children and six grandchildren. I have a business here in Chestertown, which I started in 2005. It's Men on the Move, a small local moving company. And we serve the needs of the community, as well as local businesses and some of the municipalities. I also have a small little business operation, which I started last year in 2020 during the COVID year, of selling coffee under Cafe Jose, selling the family product from Honduras, which is under the name of Cafe Madrona LLC. And I've also been involved with serving with the women in need. I served as a board member there and treasurer. I also served as a board member with the Barfield Center for the Arts, previously the Prince Theater. Also volunteered in coaching basketball with the County Parks and Rec Leaders Club. And also involved with the Women in Need Teen Center, and being as a mentor and also a youth leader with our church. I'm very fluent in Spanish, and I look forward to serving our citizens and neighbors.
Thank you very much, Jose.
Thank you.
Robert Miller, I would like you to have the opportunity for introduction.
Welcome all. Thank you. My name is Bob Miller, Ward One Town Council candidate. My wife and I bought a home in Chestertown in 2013 and moved permanently here in 2016 when my wife became the first nurse practitioner at Heron Point. It was an easy move for my CPA business, since I provide mostly virtual accounting and tax consulting services to clients in DC and Chestertown, which is a specialty and nonprofit organization. I do have an office in downtown Chestertown to meet the clients and belong to the Kent County Chamber of Commerce. In addition to consulting, I worked 30 years in 18 different well-known national and international nonprofit organizations. I worked as a senior financial manager, CFO, VP, Vice President of Finance and Controller at the National Academies, Children's Defense Fund, Advocates for Youth, NAMI, World Vision International, and Search for Common Ground, to name a few. I have managed government grants as well as foundation and corporate grants ranging from $25,000 to $250 million. I have also negotiated grant agreements, ensured grant compliance, and prepared budgets for actual people. I have relevant educational degrees and experience in biology, taxation, and legal studies, provide additional depth and understanding of town council issues that will involve the environment, taxes, and state and local government issues. This is my second run for Town Council Ward One. I ran with David Foster and Owen Bailey in the last election. While I came in last, I know I came in first in Ward One for the citizens who voted for me. For this run, I know I said I would drop out if another candidate decided to run, and for that, I apologize. Tim decided to run only after learning there was another candidate in the race. I think we both agree that a contested election is more interesting for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And finally, we'd like to hear from Tim O'Brien. Can't hear you, Tim. Tim, you're not coming through, so I want you to try to start over. I'm not sure what to tell you to do, but I don't hear you.
Is there any, can you hear me at all?
Yes, yes.
Here we go. Chestertown is a special place. I'm sure we know that. My wife and I came here 12 years ago. We moved back from overseas. When we drove across the Chester River Bridge, we found Chestertown. We raised our kids here, send up county public schools, built lifelong friendships, really enjoyed the small-town life, historic town Chester River. As terrible and tragic as the last year's been, we appreciate even more what Chestertown is and can be, and this has only grown for us. Hopefully, COVID has also reminded us that we are all in this together, and the strong families and communities are really still the foundations of our collective success and happiness. I'd be honored to represent Chestertown Ward One on the Town Council. I decided to run for office because I want to be a strong advocate for local business, quality of life issues, community engagement, and sustainable planning and growth. Over the next four years, the mayor and next council will have to make substantial decisions. I strongly believe in public service, hard work, and also that my experience, energy, and focus will allow me to make meaningful contributions to the town that gives us so much. Having served in many different roles, former international diplomat with USDA, small business owner, Chesapeake Bay research scientist, Peace Corps volunteer, parent, artist, I pride myself on being a problem solver and a bridge builder who can work with diverse groups and interests and find practical, equitable solutions. I have a master's degree from Johns Hopkins University in environmental science and policies. I've done a lot of political and policy research. I believe that building communities supported with basically from all of the above, bottom-up, top-down approach is really how we're going to solve the problems in Chestertown. And I want to be an effective member of the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. We got through on that one. And because we've still got you going, and you were last on the rotation for introductions, we're going to let you go first on the first question. And that first question, and again to the audience, these are questions that the candidates received prior to the forum. The first question is, and this goes to Tim, in the area of tax differential. Residents of the town pay town and county taxes for services, but the county does not contribute to road maintenance or public safety. Only three counties in Maryland are in this dilemma. In all others, the county contributes to the incorporated areas' costs, provides the services where residents are given a rebate on taxes. What steps would you support to resolve this issue in Kent County?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, this is a very important issue for the taxpaying citizens of Chestertown. It's gone unresolved for far too long. It might sound complicated, but fundamentally, it's really not. Basically, this entire situation is starving Chestertown budget, which then translates into not getting roads fixed, not getting services. Unfortunately, Kent County is one of the few counties where by state law, it is up to the county commissioners to give the rebate to towns, and is not required by law, which it is required in many other counties. So by law, it is up to the good grace of the commissioners to return that as a rebate to Chestertown. There has been some progress with county commissioners under Serino and David Foster. We need to continue that constructive progress. The county needs Chestertown, and Chestertown needs the county. Ultimately, Chestertown residents deserve public services that they pay taxes for without duplicating the cost. The steps I would take, continue the good faith negotiations. Other thing is look for common benefits by identifying duplicate overhead costs and equipment, public safety, maintenance, storage facilities, IT, fuel, municipal supplies, admin services. Where are we overlapping that we can combine or cost share and streamline these services for both the county and the town to save money? If progress is not made with the county commissioners on the tax differential, we can actually call in professional arbitration from the state or municipal associations, which will help us on a professional level. Other than that, the only solution is to actually vote the commissioners out, replace them with commissioners that will be favorable to this solution, or to have actually state law changed at the state level, which would force Kent County by law to provide that rebate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Robert Miller, I'd like you to have the opportunity to answer this question. Would you like me to repeat the question? Robert, you need to...
No need, no need to repeat.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Property taxes are the largest revenue source of Chestertown and Kent County. For 2021, Chestertown expects to receive nearly $2.6 million in property tax. The property tax rate in Chestertown is now .4322 for $100 assessed value or 16% over the rate charged three years ago. Kent County and other towns have enjoyed literal no increase in property taxes over the past 10 years. Chestertown rates are going up in part because there is no tax reimbursement, or in other words, tax differential for double taxation. Paying property taxes in Chestertown and Kent County is essential for good governance, but paying property taxes to both Chestertown and Kent County for the same services is double taxing. To solve this problem, a tax differential is needed to reduce the property tax rate in Chestertown while requiring Kent County to cover services such as road maintenance and public safety as provided to all towns in the county. But because these services are not paid for by Kent County, Chestertown must cover these services by increasing the town's property tax. Over a 10-year period, Kent County was the only county in the state of Maryland that showed a 100% decrease in tax differential. Prior to 2015, there had always been a tax differential in Chestertown. Like Comico and Warchester Counties never had a tax differential, and Kent County joined that group in 2015. Before COVID, Ward One Town Councilman David Foster proposed a special independent task force, naming me the task force leader to address all aspects of the tax differential issue to find a solution with the Kent County Commission. David, now his mayor, is committed to having a task force reengage with a public awareness campaign, whether I am elected to represent Ward One or not.
Thank you very much, Robert. Jose, we'd like you to have a chance to answer this question. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, you don't have to.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Yeah, the county definitely should start paying the differential and share the costs as they did prior to 2008. There has to be a better approach, I think, to working together to craft a joint type of budget for overlapping services like public safety, the trash collection, you know, things like road maintenance that can be mutually agreed upon. Exploring these best practices and contract with nongovernmental agencies and businesses may find ways to better spend the tax payer dollars as well. The county holds all the keys to this, though, as was said previously, that they don't have to get into this or share in these costs and give us a rebate. And it's going to require reaching across the table, I think. And we have to be able to work better as partners and make the finances more equitable, you know, for all of our residents. There's going to be legal challenges, of course, in working this out. As you know, we're a small community, and we're a concerned community, and, you know, made up of intelligent and dedicated people, you know, good neighbors to one another. We should be able to resolve this amicably and, you know, for the good of all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. And finally, on this question, I'd like to give Ted a chance to answer this question. And would you like the question repeated?
No, no. The question basically comes down to whether or not, how do we get the county to refund us the tax differential? I think the first step on that is to get an actual solid number of how much we're overpaying. I believe Chris Serino came to the county commissioners right before COVID happened and asked for $250,000 back, which is, the town could do a lot of $250,000. So how do we get that back? What do we do with it when we get it back? And hopefully, we can do this in a peaceful way. Ocean City had to go to court to try and resolve the tax differential problem there, and they lost. So the question comes then, why did they lose? There's something unique about Ocean City that I'm not aware of, and how do we move forward from this point? We don't want to have to take things to the state, but we might to change the law. And most easily, and I think this is a repeat theme defined when you talked about local issues, is the relationship we have with the commissioners that has got to be improved. We hold a sizable percentage of the population of Kent County, and we should be, or we are, whether they like to admit it or not, our voices count to what happens in this county. And the timer went away, and I cannot hear you. You're still muted, man.
You can't hear you.
There we go. Okay, yeah, the timer went away for me, too. I had asked if the speaker could be highlighted, and I don't know whether that, you know, messed up the screen or not, so we're working on that. Oh, okay, so we're going to keep working on the timer and hopefully, we can come up with that, because it's going to be difficult for both all of us to time ourselves. But we're going to go on to the next question, okay? Question number two. The American Rescue Plan, otherwise known as ARPA funds, Chestertown will receive over $4 million issued here in ARPA funds, and they are currently unassigned. What are your priorities for the use of these funds in Chestertown? And going with a rotation, we're going to have Robert Miller answer this question first.
The American Rescue Plan Act is providing $4 billion in direct relief to Chestertown per Title VI of the Social Security Act, Section 603, which establishes the Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Funds must be committed to specific projects by 2024 and spent by 2026. The $4 million grant will spend across four major categories, requiring the hiring of staff that have, this is my opinion, a grant with spending across should hire staff that have experience of managing a large government grant. Other towns receiving ARPA funds have hired staff just for that purpose. The Central Office for the Allocation of Funds across the four categories requires a process to decide who gets funding because of COVID. The four areas of ARPA are as follows. One, to respond to public health emergency or its negative economic impact, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and to aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel, hospitality. One way we could handle this area would be for the elderly care facilities of Chestertown to be able to access ARPA funds if COVID has caused a negative economic impact, and this includes Heron Point in Ward One. Second point is to respond to workers performing essential work during COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay to eligible workers. I believe all police, fire, rescue, and hospital personnel should be provided with premium pay for assisting the community during COVID. This would include reimbursement and future funding to cover the costs of COVID-related services. Third part of ARPA is for provision for government services to the extent of reduction in revenue due to COVID public health emergency relative to revenues collected in the entire fiscal year. I think we would need to do a review of the Chestertown Utilities Commission income statement for lost revenue during COVID to provide additional funding if needed. And the final point for ARPA is to make necessary investments in sewer, water, and broadband infrastructure. I think that's clear all around. No need to explain that.
Thank you.
I don't know if the timer is running.
I know. We're just going to go and trust everybody's good choices.
I think that was not mortifying.
And going, yeah, we're just going to go forward and give you gentlemen a chance to answer the question, and we'll hope that we could get the timer back up. But in the meantime, we're going to go ahead with our questions. And for this second question, the next person in rotation is Tim O'Brien.
Yes, thank you. This is quite a windfall. There are some provisions, as Bob Miller explained, and how this money can be funded and used. While this is a budget windfall for the town, there is a backlog of needs. $4 million can be used up very quickly, so the next mayor, council must have, they've got some serious decisions to make, and we need to make sure we leverage this to the maximum benefit of the town. My priorities for the use of these funds in Chestertown would be, one, quickly review the existing town comprehensive plan, infrastructure priorities, see what's relevant, prioritize actions, and find out the cost of those actions, roads, sewers, everything else, get requests for proposals, get those budgets out quickly. It takes a long time to get these things moving, and like they said, you have to have the money allocated by 2004 or '24. Immediately hire a half-time or full-time town grant professional, a grant-writing professional, and someone who knows how to manage large funds, so they can maximize these funds. They can seek additional federal and state funds and use those funds for, find other matching grants. That position will pay for itself in that regard. Do everything that is possible to maintain the hospital. We are a town on the downhill. If we lose any more services or do not build services in the hospital, we have got to fund the services for our elderly and young people in town and make negotiations with them so that all services are available. We have to do everything possible to invest so we can, and be able to reuse and reutilize the Dixon Plant, which is one in town that has just now become vacant. We need to maintain that and work with the college to have it for commercial and community activities so it can generate income and jobs and resources. I see a big motivation to invest in technology and equipment upgrades, invest in things that can be upgraded and give a big return on investment, and will then create future savings. Increase funding for local town activities, nonprofit groups, many to work and need support. I want to use that money to identify bottlenecks, long-term bottlenecks to business recovery, attracting new business, sustainable residential growth, jobs. The bottlenecks are good investment to let growth happen on its own. General small investment, duplication of the town, quality of life of residents. We need to be very smart about these funds, but we can really use them and have long-term generational benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Gentlemen, what I'm going to do at this point, until we can see if we can get the timer, when you've got 30 seconds left, I'm going to raise a card that says 30 seconds. Okay, so at least any note to wind up your answers. So I hope that works temporarily and that we can get back on track here. But meanwhile, we're going to go on with our questions. And Ted, you are next in the rotation on this question. Do you need the question repeated?
No, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, this comes down to the COVID relief money. As I said earlier, we got here in a rather draconian kind of way, but nonetheless, we are here getting a windfall of money for the town, and how do we spend that? It's important that we spend this in a way that's going to help the town grow, it's going to increase revenue in the town. My ideas would be to obviously improve the infrastructure of the town. We're unique in that we're so close to the river, and our infrastructure just ages. I will need to spend a little bit of it on that. But doing things to make this town a more business-friendly neighborhood. Go along the two major shopping centers we have here in town, the Acme and Redners. There's tons of empty storefronts. There's been complaints about taxes, or not taxes, but rents being too high. Is there a way that we can use that money to help offset some of that? My big thing about this money is we need to invest it in a way that's going to help the town grow so that we can get some of that money back over the long term. I'm a little wary of hiring anybody. Well, grants are a little bit different. But we don't know how much money we're going to have after that's done, and it's federal government money. That always comes with a lot of strings. And we need to make sure that we use that wisely. So, yeah, basically, doing whatever we can to promote growth in this town, fill up some of these empty storefronts, to talk to people about what they need to be done around here. And talking to people in town, another thing I've heard is that they want more things for kids to do. And promoting something for the children to do now that COVID is over, people get outside, is also an important thing to do with that money.
Thanks very much, Ted. We are now going to move on to question number three. And that question, as you were given prior to the forum, is, identify the primary needs in the ward you wish to represent that can effectively be addressed by the town council. And on this question, oh, Jose, did you get a chance to answer the last question? I don't think you did.
No, I didn't, not yet.
I am so sorry.
It's all right.
Yeah, you want to go on with that? Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, you don't have to repeat.
Okay, thank you.
All right, it's, yeah, there are a series of infrastructural improvements that the town can definitely use. And some of these can be right here in my ward, for instance, and such as better lighting on the streets, especially a flatland road, possibly a more safer access to the Gateway Park. And, you know, things such as lighting and fencing at that park, and maybe a bathroom facility would be good. I know that these are things that are infrastructural, and I'm not sure if the restrictions would apply in the use of these funds for something like that. I consider that kind of an infrastructural project. Also, the town can improve, also, where we currently have the Town Maintenance Shop on Cannon Street, the possibility would be to relocate that and put it in one of the industrial-type parks that we have maybe access to, including maybe the one on Dixon Drive. Right now, that sits along the rail trail, and, you know, it's surrounded on Cannon Street by art and craft businesses and new residences. And the reuse of that space as a park or playground would also be a possibility that would serve that community. Moving the town shop would need more efficient use of buildings and use of space. It'd also reduce the heavy traffic from the equipment that has to roll through that little neighborhood area there on Cannon and Mill Street. That would create some savings long-term and improve the quality of life in that area, and also create some jobs for those that are involved in construction and relocation of that facility.
Thank you very much, Jose.
Thank you.
Now, because you were last on that question, and because I sort of slurred on that one, we're gonna let you go with the first rotation on question number three, and I'm gonna repeat it at this point.
All right.
Identify the primary needs in the ward you wish to represent that can effectively be addressed by the town council, okay?
Okay. I had the pleasure of meeting our new police chief, Ronald Dixon, just yesterday through a Zoom meeting that was hosted by Mr. Pollard. And Mr. Dixon is very open to transparency and a working partnership with all the residents, as well as with faith-based leaders in the community and other community leaders. This improved relations with the public safety and the policy shift in policing to include even social services and mental health officials as part of a good policing effort. Would be very, very welcome in Chestertown. With this recent new hire of our police chief, the time is ripe to explore how we want to, in the future, see how this town is policed in our community and to look like, and see how it's gonna look like and operate down the road. Conducting regular public meetings and, you know, having these opportunities for personal interaction with the police will also help to reestablish the trust in the communities that need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. I would like to give Ted an opportunity to answer this first question.
The issues that are needing to be explored, I think Jose was right about, flatland road, there desperately needs to be sidewalk along that road. Sidewalks are not cheap, but something needs to be there for someone to get killed. And additional lighting, just making it a safer place to live, something. Because out here, and I'm in Coventry Farms, and we feel very isolated from the rest of town. And we feel like we're kind of stuck up here, forgotten, and that's not good. There's a lot of wasted talent up here that we need to feel like we're more included in the town. Some of the other things that need to be addressed is, again, there's vacancies and open storefronts out this way. How do we get those things built? How do we get some of the houses here occupied? Not too big of a problem, but we need to make sure that that doesn't ever become a problem. Yeah, and then, of course, there's also the issues with, well, the arts and entertainment districts, the idea of expanding that up High Street. I think we're talking about almost as far as Royal Farms. I don't, I like the chicken, but it's not art, so it probably doesn't need to go up that far. But extending the arts and entertainment district up this way and promoting that, helping people realize that there's more of Chestertown, your past. You know, while people criticize what they can stop, but giving growth, developing High Street is a big project for this ward. This is the largest ward in town, it's the most diverse, it's fastest-growing. So we also need to be ready for the changes at this time of year.
Thank you, Ted. I hope you, all of you gentlemen can see that the timer is back up and working again. We'll hope it stays working, so I don't have to flash my little card up there. We'll play it with the timer. So the next person on the rotation for this question is Tim O'Brien.
Okay, thank you. The primary need that we're what, maybe some same general needs of the whole town? Specifically, we don't have a lot of businesses, but we do have some small businesses that need support. Of course, infrastructure, there's a lot of runoff issues in our area. We're, the runoff is eroding. We definitely need to make sure that all services for care of the local elderly that are in residential homes, of course, Heron Point, but we have a lot of elderly that are also in homes, not in Heron Point, that need to be checked on and made sure that they have the services that they need. Definitely repotables and stuff. I'd like to focus on also a lot of recreational activities for youth and families in town. There's very limited activities for the youth and places for them to gather. We've got a lot of issues. I used to walk my kids to Garnet's, crossing Route 13 with, you know, crosswalks and stuff. We need to make sure that the routes for kids and elderly are safe when we're crossing from the big streets. My main focus for development would be working on Bailey Park to bring it as a destination park. Right now, it's got very limited entrances. I'd like to add another entrance, a walking entrance, expand the parking lot, add a large, like a destination-type playground, something large enough that kids will be, go there. And, you know, that would help bring a lot of the activities from the rolling road neighborhood in, people at large, just be like one end, have access to it. It would be a very draw and a quality of life for the town. Would like to see better enforcement of just basic town ordinances concerning abandoned vehicles, trash, and neglected properties. That's gotten kind of lax. But also just general community development, community engagement. I would like to get, reengage with the college to help increase volunteerism in the town and our ward. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Tim. And finally, on question number three, I'd like to give Robert Miller a chance to answer this question.
Thank you. We lived in Washington DC during 9/11. And less than one year later, the Montgomery County sniper attacks killed several people within one mile of our house in Tensham, Maryland. After that time, I recall seeing signs and recorded announcements on the DC Metro, "If you see something, say something." During my Ward 1 campaign in 2017, I did report two issues to the town council, since both were code violations. One was an abandoned car parked on the street for over 30 days, and the other was holograph exceeding two feet. The code states eight inches max. The car was removed, and the grass was cut. I have heard that my role was not to say something, even though I saw something. I was just a citizen making a report. Just this year, there was a house in Ward 1 with grass exceeding two feet. David Foster, town councilman from Ward 1, was looking at that lawn, and next day it was cut. Anyone that lives in Ward 1 or 3 or anywhere has the right to report code violations. We are a county of laws and a country of laws, and without laws, it would be mayhem. Why do you think the founders established the Constitution? A society without laws is anarchic. Take a look at the Chestertown, Maryland Code of Ordinance. It has much information regarding noise, litter, dogs, lighting, et cetera. The code is set up so that citizens can report to their mayor and town council code violations, since they are the enforcement office. This is not about getting anyone in trouble, since everyone is allowed due process. The recording helps ensure that our community stays safe, healthy, and prosperous for all.
Thank you, Robert. This now concludes the section of the forum where we had the questions that were provided to the candidates prior to the forum. Now we are opening it up to audience questions. And I will, we will still do this in rotation, and each candidate will still have two minutes to answer, if they choose to answer the question. You can pass on a question if you care to do that. So just when I call your name, if you don't want to answer that question, just let me know. The first question that we're going to provide from the audience is, "Downtown revitalization is a stated goal of the town council. What is the most important action council can take to begin this process?" And I'm going to let this question go to Ted Gallo to begin with.
The first thing I think we should do is go into some of these businesses and say, hey, what is it that we can help you with? What are some of the problems that you run into? How can we resolve those problems? What made you want to move to Chestertown to begin with? How can we promote those problems? Or how can we promote those benefits? Fortunately, being a small town, that's not a very hard thing to do. Reaching out to some people in town, the people who visit. What'd you think of Chestertown? What can we improve upon? Getting ideas for that sort of stuff. Revitalization, especially downtown like that, is going to be a priority. And also, don't be afraid to reach out to people who have left. Why did you close up shop? Why did you move to another place? Is there anything that we could do to get you to come back? And get a better idea of what businesses in the Upper Shore may want from us, and try our best to cater that, cater our downtown area to that. Yeah, so basically, reaching out to businesses, letting them know that we're here to hear your voice and proactive, to make them feel comfortable, like they've got a voice, like we're listening, so that they're gonna want to say that they're gonna speak highly of Chestertown. It's also important, we have plenty of events that just, key party festivals, down raising, that bring, I don't know, lots of people to town. We need to take advantage of that as well. Figure out what are the ways that we can setting up food trucks down there, more of those sorts of festivals, just to promote Chestertown. Because if people come, they like Chestertown in a crowd, they're gonna think to themselves, and I know I did before I moved here, what's Chestertown like when it's not full of a million people?
Thank you, Ted. Jose, I would like to give you an opportunity to answer this question, and if you would like to, would you like me to restate it?
Yes, can you restate it?
Yes. Downtown revitalization is a stated goal of the town council. What is the most important action council can take to begin this process?
Oh, well, that, I think we have to facilitate the vendors, the merchants, that currently operate in that area, and try to revitalize that, as well as upper downtown. Not just, not just, not just that area, but also a part of High Street, I think can use a lot of help there. And revitalizing that area would also stimulate some growth economically for those residents of that area as well. As far as the town involvement, we can't get in the way. So the best thing we can do is allow things to grow economically, you know, the way that free enterprise system works here. And we don't want to be a hindrance or a block for anyone that has a vision of opening a business and starting some type of entrepreneurship within Chestertown. And we have to be friends of business. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, would you like to answer this question? You need to unmute. And if so, do you want me to repeat it?
No, I've got it.
Okay.
So revitalization is a stated goal of town council, I would, you know, look at that slightly different and say it's a shared goal. Because, you know, in terms of revitalizing a community, it's about businesses, you know, coming into the community. And we have seen over the last year or so, a couple new restaurants, a soda, ice cream shop, I guess. We've seen things happen in this town that haven't happened, you know, for a while. And I know COVID has really put a damper on many things. But where my office is across the street is that Arts, the Arts Building, or whatever that building is, it's been renovated. So there are renovations that are happening within Chestertown that are, you know, revitalizing. But the goal, you know, isn't just the town council. There's gotta be a shared goal, not just with the council. We don't want to be in the way of anything, but we certainly want to be able to promote. But, you know, the businesses are the ones that are gonna have to come in here and decide this is the place for them to revitalize.
Sure.
That's my opinion.
Thank you, Robert. And finally, Tim, would you like to answer this question? And if so, do you want me to repeat it?
Yes, I do, and, no, thank you, I've got it.
Okay.
No, it's, the downtown areas are the heart and soul of the character of town. We need to focus on all businesses citywide. But down there, we need to focus on essentially making sure that there's enough for people to do. I feel like we need to be as flexible as possible. We need to work with the landowners or the landlords to make the rent accessible. We need to get out of, you know, really get out of the way with a lot of burden to people who want to restore and revitalize a lot of these historic buildings in a very tasteful and proper manner. And we can't necessarily depend, we've had some wonderful angel investors that restored some properties, but we need this as a broad investment across the whole town. I feel like we need to really engage with the college. We have an amazing resource with all the students there. I see very few 18-and-over venues in the evenings for kids at the college that would actually draw them out and bring them into town. I'd like to see more music with the 18-and-over options. I definitely think that revitalizing, using the Dixon Plant, the one that's now vacant, for a commercial kitchen, so we can have wonderful new restaurants that are local, that they need access to a commercial kitchen to get started so that they can then eventually move into a storefront like Fat Daddy's did. And we've got some amazing talent, culinary talent in this town. We need to maximize that, but we need to let them have access to affordable rents downtown, possibly looking at zoning where we can have more mixed use that will allow residential and commercial use, to allow more vacancies for the price ranges that people need in order to get started. So definitely, all the support, the businesses are what we need, and we have a lot to do on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Tim, hang around, unmute yourself. We're gonna go to the second question.
Okay.
This one's about citizen participation and budgeting. Other than encouraging attendance at regular town budget meetings, how would you provide opportunities to Chestertown residents to affect how the town's monies are spent?
Well, one of the things I would like to do specifically, if elected, is to make sure that, you know, this is, you know, this is a job that definitely is not, it's not a part-time job. It can be something you have to be engaged in constantly. We really should have no excuse. We have so many forms of communication. The idea would be able to receive input, emails, texts from the constituents, and have a broad dissemination of budget ideas and priorities. They've done a fantastic job updating the town website. All of this information is available. The town councilmen just need to be making sure that they, that their constituents understand that they are listening, they're trying to prioritize. It is a difficult and just time-consuming process, but we have to be equitable in our distribution of funds, and we have to be very, very precise about how to use them that will return in investments, plus create greater community harmony, so.
Thank you, Tim. Robert, would you like to answer this question?
Sure, I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
Did you repeat the question?
I can repeat it, yes.
Thank you.
Other than encouraging attendance at regular town budget meetings, how would you provide opportunities for Chestertown residents to affect how the town's monies are spent?
Well, that's a really tricky question, because when I was running for Ward 1 three years ago, I did a large analysis of the budget itself and the process by which it got created. And I would tell you that much of what's in that budget, you know, is, for example, town staff salary. Well, there's no way that citizens are gonna get involved with deciding who's gonna get paid what. But I think what can be involved in terms of the town itself are activities. You know, there are several activities in the budget. We use the, um, uh, the, you know, downraving festival, or there used to be a HP festival, you know, or, or whatever, even the, um, uh, you know, Saturday Farmer's Market. I mean, there's things that are activities in the town that for which the citizens could have incidences. But there are many things that the citizens, you know, just, just wouldn't be able to because of other, uh, you know, other considerations, if you will. And, and the budget is limited, yes it is. And a citizen is not gonna be able to decide yes or no on whether they're gonna repair roads, right? That's just sort of something that the transportation department within the town is gonna figure out. But again, focusing on activities that this town would like to do, you know, I think would be something that input from the community would be a great thing to implement into the budget.
Thank you, Robert. Jose, would you like to answer this question? And if so, do you, would you like me to repeat it?
No, I can, I, I, I can answer that question. I think personally, I think it is a good venue or platform to have input from, from our, you know, residents and those that wanna participate should be allowed to, you know, communicate with us and be able to offer their insights, their recommendations, suggestions for many different type things that we can be open to. You know, as, uh, there are, I'm sure, restrictions and things that they wouldn't have access to or be able to, to influence. But on the other hand, those things that they can, uh, we should open the floor for them and let them voice out their concerns and, and their, and their viewpoints on things. I think this way, it shows more transparency as well and gives them a, a, a little bit of a say in how, how their town is governed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. And finally, Ted, would you like to answer this question? And would you like to have it repeated?
Uh, no, you don't have to repeat it. Well, obviously, we do wanna encourage people to, you know, go to town hall meetings and all that. But we're also living in a time where, especially with the kids at Washington College, engaging them on a level that they, that they understand. And that would be through social media, cyber sorts of ways of communicating with people, having a, a website, not just a website, great, but ways that people can comment on things. Keeping them up to date. A lot of times, if you want, if you want someone to give you feedback on certain things, they need to know that it's happening. And if you can put it on a Facebook page, or an Instagram page, or whatever page, then people are, become aware of it, and they're more likely to comment on it. Um, it also wouldn't be a bad idea to, on things like, you get the, um, the Farmer's Market, just set up a town booth down there. Someone who works for the town, someone who promotes the town down there regularly, asking people in town, what, what do you think of this? What do you think of that? Getting feedback from some of them. Those, the Farmer's Market, I know, and a lot of people from out of town come to that, but that, that's a resource that a lot of people in town can use as well. So you have, you have to be innovative in that sort of thing. You also have to look for what activities already exist in the community and go to those. And just say, hey, I'm with Chester Town, I'm a town council person, I'm a whatever. What, listen to what they're saying, get feedback from them. Give a presentation on what's going on in town, um, to the various organizations that are already here. And even for the county, get feedback from the county on to, uh, what do you guys think we need focus off, from people who live in the nearby communities. Yeah, but I, like I said, things like the Farmer's Market, um, yeah.
Thank you, Ted. We're gonna move on to another question, and this one is more about, um, human resources, human services, and to change gears here a little bit. About the homeless situation that we experience in Chester Town. And so I'm going, this question is going to, um, start with, uh, Robert Miller. The question is, what recommendations do you have for dealing with the homeless problem in Chester Town, especially in regard, regard to its effect on town parks? Robert, would you like to answer this question?
Sure. You know, having lived in Washington DC for quite some time, it's got quite a population of homeless people. And all, all around the city, when you walk through, you know, the major business districts of Washington, there's always homeless people lying in parks. But there's always a place, it was a place created for them to go, especially during, uh, snowstorms, you know, bad weather, and there were places where they could go for food and even spend the night, but they had to go out, you know, the next day. I don't think we have a facility with that in mind here in Chester Town, although there are, there may be some, well, there are some vacant buildings. Well, just, let's look at the Dixon Vow, you know, property, for example, that's a vacant building. That could be turned into a homeless shelter, for example. So I'm not quite familiar whether or not there are homeless shelters around here. I don't think so, but it would be something that we should look at, certainly. Because, yeah, there are people sleeping in the parks here. I was walking by the train station over there by Wilmer Park, and there was somebody sleeping on the, on the deck right there. And I thought, oh my goodness, I mean, is this, is this how it is? I remember walking on the bike trail and seeing people, you know, bragging suitcases behind them, clearly not going anywhere but trying to find a place to rest. There should be a location where the homeless do get to go. And this town has enough empty space, I believe, that we could fill it, you know, with homeless people, a homeless shelter, if you will. You know, it's not a permanent situation. We've gotta add mental health services to that somehow, because these people need help. So, you know, there's many levels to, to the problem of homelessness, no question about it. But we need to take a couple steps forward and try to, you know, address that.
Thank you, Robert. Uh, Tim, would you like to answer this question? And if so, would you like it repeated?
Um, yeah, thank you. No, it is a difficult thing. It's unfortunate that this is an occurrence here, regardless if it's for mental health, drug addiction, or other issue. Yeah, we need these people to get services. I am not sure if that's, there's a county service that's not being provided. But regardless, I personally don't believe that we need to have a homeless person sleeping on the bench in the park, constantly charging his cellphone at the, the city pole. That's basically why he's there. He needs something that's actually more sustainable. We have, um, at least two to three homeless living in the back of the, the front dry cleaning building directly across from town hall. It smells like urine, there's homeless people living and camped in that building. That's causing a disturbance, the trash, everything like that. One, it's just, it just needs to be addressed, if people need help. But also, um, we don't need to be able to, you know, I can let this continue just without having it addressed. It just seems to have been going on and waiting for a solution or someone, some service to, or someone to step in to work with these people, to find them something that's private, that's help, um, whether it's mental or drug addiction help. But yes, we, we need to move them out of the parks, we can have them back and have a bench back that we need for our citizens, for everyday use.
Thank you, Tim. Ted, would you like to answer this question? If so, repeat, do you want me to repeat it?
No.
Okay.
I've got, I've got a lot to say about this. I am a licensed social worker, I work for the state of Maryland. I've done outpatient mental health work in Baltimore City for a number of years. I know a lot about homelessness. There is a homeless shelter in Chester, in County, and it's unfortunate that so many people don't know about it, but it is there. The issue right now is I don't think it's open. Homeless shelters generally don't open if the weather starts getting cold, which should start to open up here soon. Um, it's also staffed usually by churches and volunteers overnight. And it's one of the things, come and stay the night, get out at like seven o'clock, best of luck, just in time for everybody to go to work and see the homeless folks. Um, I've also worked at Witzit Center for a time. And I'll tell you, homelessness and addiction are a huge issue. Or, now, the gentleman I think we're talking about down, downtown here is actually a very nice man. Very concerned, but the mental health services he needs aren't available. And addiction goes hand in hand with that. And I don't know if anybody's heard this, but one of the things that brings people to Chester Town is because we have the Witzit Center here in town. And they come to Chester Town to get sober, sometimes they leave, sometimes they stay. And that will bring, you know, we want that, we want positive results out of that. Because once you do your fourteen or twenty-one days at a place like Witzit Center, sometimes you have no place to go. And you just end up walking out and you're back on the streets, using that. So like I said, I'll try and keep this to less than two minutes. But the homeless problem is, is gonna stay. I've worked with the Department of Human Services, and the resources that are available for people that are homeless are, I'm, they're, they're a joke. And you gotta send people to Baltimore City to get anything. And that's something that we definitely need to work with the Department of Social Services to try and address, to try, and churches are another good resource, a place we can address that. There's no reason, some should be sleeping on that bench, who wants them to sleep?
Thank you, Ted. Finally, Jose, do you want to, um, a, answer this question? And do you need it repeated?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a sad situation, the homeless that we have, uh, you know, we, the Bible, it, it always said that we will always have four among us, and we also have homeless among us. I know with the Samaritan group and some of the churches, uh, sometimes they can offer, you know, like Ed said, a overnight type of arrangements for some people to stay, and they're kind of doing it on a rotating basis. More so in the winter months, uh, that, uh, you know, that's coming soon. There's gotta be some long-term solution to this, though, because, uh, as, you know, more family structures are also gonna be impacted economically, you know. Inflation costs are very high, and, um, you know, just the expense of trying to stay, stay alive and, and to live is, is, is very hard for people to, to, to attain, you know, financial security and stability. And of course, the mental aspect as well is a big problem. And the Witzit Center not, uh, not being available as it used to be. Some of the people that were released, uh, of course, still remain, uh, in the neighborhoods. I know that, uh, behind the Dollar General, there's, uh, some person that actually sleeps behind the, uh, some of the dumpsters back there. And it's very unhealthy, unsafe. But sometimes homeless people make those decisions themselves, too, and, and for mental reasons or maybe other reasons, they, they don't wanna go to a facility, and, and they wanna have that, that freedom and independence. But it's a problem that has to be looked at. I don't know how much we can really do. A facility would have to be manned, it has to be staffed, uh, to run a facility, and maybe it's something that the county can help with.
Thank you, Jose. I think we have, uh, time for one more question before closing, um, remarks by the candidates. So I'm going to start this, um, rotation again with, with Jose. So here is the question, if you care to answer it. What can the council do to support existing minority businesses and encourage the establishment of new ones?
Council, well, as a, as an immigrant myself, I'm, I speak Spanish, and, uh, I think we can reach out to, to that segment of our population and, you know, address some of their concerns and, and help to empower them and give them, uh, you know, a little bit of, of hope in, in being a part of the, the growth that we anticipate and that we, you know, looking forward to in the coming years. And so I have, you know, I have a good perspective on business and how to start a small business, and I can share that with them and, and be able to be an advocate for them. And, um, I think that that type of, um, just being a public servant, um, you know, in that capacity on the council, I think, uh, I, it's a, it's a great way to get back. And, uh, and if I can, uh, help in that process with them, uh, I would definitely be, uh, open to it. And also reaching out to the, uh, black indigenous people of color, uh, in our community and make sure that they also have equal access to, to the opportunities that, that are available and exist. We all can't be equal in this sense, but we should have equal access and, you know, due process, and, uh, opportunities should be made available to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Ted, would you like to answer this question? And would you like to have it repeated?
Oh, um, well, first I'd like to say, anybody out there who has, is struggling with alcoholism or drug addiction, please, we can talk to the Health Department. Go to Witzit Center Monday or Wednesday morning, you don't even need a hurled, but please take care of that. To the question at hand, um, well, it's important not only to promote minority businesses, but to promote businesses in general in town. Minority businesses, the thing that I've been hearing is they don't feel particularly welcome downtown. And we need to create a more welcoming environment down here. Putting some of the, um, the people of color who have ideas, getting them together, getting them to support one another and reach out to the community as a whole might help that deal as though someone else is with you. And I, like I said earlier, I wanna be the, the person that people can come to for ideas or help, um, to get in touch with all the different programs that exist to help, uh, business owners start up a business in town. I want people to feel like the, the town council and the town as a whole is an ally on their side. And it really bothers me to hear that so many people don't feel that way, that they don't feel welcome in town, or they don't feel welcome in Kent County. That's a, that's a very serious problem. And people need to feel like that they are welcome here. And, um, yeah, and just making sure that people know what, what resources are available to them, making sure that they feel supported, that they feel welcome. That would take a lot of hours, you know, but that's the finally important thing.
Thank you, Ted. Tim, would you like to answer this question? And do you read it repeated?
Uh, yes, thank you. Definitely support the minority businesses, all small businesses. I have done a lot of development work in Latin America, I also speak Spanish. I've gotten a lot of, um, experience working with very shoestring budgets. I built a coffee mill, actually in the mountain of Costa Rica. We, at least, we had nothing, and we started something and ended up with a award-winning coffee. Um, a lot of, uh, projects in, in other cities, trying to build from what the community wants and needs to make something successful. I think a lot of it's getting out of our way. We don't need to tell people what they need, we need to hear and listen to what they need to get things going. This community is so amazing, it, it has no lack of entrepreneurial spirit or ideas. There are people wanting to start businesses all the time. We just need to have the entrance, a, a place, a commercial kitchen, if that's some sort of shared space. I would love to see the Dixon Vow, or at least part of it, turned into some sort of incubator space, low-cost, safe places, people can start their own businesses, like manufacturing, some sort of cooking, I mean, food, anything they wanna do, but give them a, a low-cost space so they can test their ideas and then let economics and, and the community support, see if it will survive or not. Let the community decide what businesses, uh, uh, can go. And then you can have, you would be probably really surprised how many businesses will start in somebody's garage or in a very small space and will grow into something very large. I would love to see many of those options. Rock Hall did it on their corner with a little mini, mini shed. We can do it inside of a Dixon Vow building or another building, giving people individual spaces to just be free to work and do their, make their creativity come alive.
Thank you very much, Tim. And Robert, would you like to answer this question?
Sure, thanks. Everybody that likes to start a business starts with an idea. But then, you know, the idea needs to be backed up with finance. I think that's, you know, that could be a problem, but we could just be a resource to, you know, direct people into the right place for the money. You know, the Small Business Administration does give out loans to minorities. Even those ARPA funds, even those ARPA funds might be useful in that regard. Some of the banks in the area might be willing to give out small business loans. A lot of times, what it is, a business, minority business, they have a, a great idea, they just need access to funds. I do like that idea that Tim just talked about, you know, incubators. I was, one of my clients in DC had a huge incubator set, set up where they brought in, you know, small businesses to try to, you know, work a couple months, work three or four months. Hey, this is a very wealthy client of mine, but they paid for these incubators to be set up so these people could then, you know, test their product, if you will. And then after that certain number of months, they were able to go out and, you know, kind of do it on their own. Everybody needs some help. And the financial arena is really where the help, you know, should be coming from. And if the council can help facilitate that in any way, I think that would be a useful, a useful thing to help minority businesses.
Thank you, Robert. I'm looking at the clock and I think we have time for one more question. So I'm going to take this rotation back to start with Ted. And here is the question that you have the opportunity to, to respond to. Talking about tapping unused talent. And we referred to this a little bit already tonight, but I wanted to focus on it. This comes from the audience. How could council tap into the enormous, enormous talent, expertise and energy available in our community and at Washington College?
I was just thinking about Washington College myself. That place is literally, it supports a factory of young educated talent. That is, can't minimize how important that is to this town, having that there. And not just the town, but just other people. Not just the college, but other people in town have that same sort of background knowledge about things that they can do to make Chester Town the best place it can be. And just opening up, how many people have a place where they can go? Do as much outreach as you can to let them know that we're gonna have a meeting here at this time, this place to discuss revitalization of, you know, Coward Street or something along those lines. And let, letting sure, making sure that people are aware of that. Going out and inviting the people who have things to say and inviting them to have a place to say it. And again, in the world we're living in right now, a lot of that's gonna be done electronically, online. Engaging people in that way. And usually, or it's not uncommon for people to have creative ideas that are also business ideas. And that goes back to expanding the arts and entertainment district. Make Chester Town a more appealing place for people to start businesses that would qualify for help in an arts and entertainment district. But we have to be proactive. We have to reach out to them. We have to make them too feel welcome to come to Chester Town to have an idea. It seem like this is the type of place that that idea can grow, that idea can thrive. And if you do enough of that, it'll develop a very positive reputation around town. Or be a place where people can go start businesses and there were talents going to be promoted. Washington College is definitely a place we need to start. Being very proactive with the college, make sure that the talent there stays.
Thank you, Ted. Jose, would you like to respond to this question?
Yes.
And do you need it repeated?
Yes, go ahead and repeat it. Thank you.
How, how could the council tap into the enormous talent, expertise and energy available in our community and at Washington College?
Yeah, I think both, yeah, the community and the college, even places like Heron Point, there's a lot of retired people that live there as well that have a lot of talent, a wealth of knowledge. And they're always looking to volunteer and give of themselves and their time. And this town, I think, from what I've seen, you know, since living here since 2003, is very active in that as far as volunteers, people that give their time and are able to help. I remember we had the Women in Need Teen Center. That we had volunteers that came in to tutor the children. And many of them got their grades, you know, up to a B average from a D average. The math and science classes and subjects. So, you know, that, and they were there and they were more than happy to help and offer, you know, their talents. And the same way the town can utilize the resources that are here, the human resources that exist. Everyone wants to be involved and engaged, I believe, and that's a good thing. And there's always concern how to improve, you know, the quality of life here. And it's meaningful work, you know, we call it work meaningful. As far as volunteering, may not pay, but they don't, they're not interested in that. They do wanna give of themselves and they want to contribute as much as possible. And we would have to find ways to, to facilitate that and, and, and make that accessible to us and be open to it because we can only, you know, get better if we work collaboratively and, you know, tap in all the resources available to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Robert, would you like to respond to this question? Robert, you're.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, tapping into talent is a, yeah, it's, it's important. You know, the question becomes, how do we connect? I mean, how do they, do we go to them? Do they come to us? Is there a place where people can put in information so we can put a tap down? I know that in town, this is a couple of years ago, there's a group of individuals who would offer free services. These are retired CEOs, CFOs, people who have business experience could actually be used to help other businesses, you know, for low cost or no cost, to set up accounting systems like QuickBooks, for example. I can't remember the name of the group that was in town back then, and they still be here in, in town now. So there are groups of people that can offer services. I like what Jose said. I mean, there's talent over in Heron Point, artistic talent over there that's just unmatched. You know, and to get those people over there, training other young artists, for example, to sort of, you know, help, help them move along would be an awesome thing. As a, as an adjunct professor at Washington College, yeah, there's a lot of energy up there, I can tell you that. It's just trying to figure out how they, they've got so much going on, those kids got so much going on. How do we tap that energy out of there, you know, to the, to the town down here? Idiots, what we've all been talking about is you gotta have a way to have something in town that will bring them to us. We're a small town with a college. We're not a college town, right? So it'd be nice if it were more like a college town that could, you know, engage with these kids and tap into their energy, certainly their talent, you know, to help us all, you know, grow in that way.
Thank you, Robert. And finally, Tim, would you like to respond to this question?
Yeah, I guess, thank you. Absolutely. It's, it's amazing how much talent we have here in town. Each, I, I believe, we've, we've accessed, we actually accessed a lot of volunteerism in this town because of the, the tight budget. One of the things that I think we need to do to, one, appreciate and maximize that talent is start, first of all, each, each councilman could have an amazing advisory committee of people from the ward or this town. One that would be jealous of, I mean, the professional level talent here. Each councilman can't be an expert in everything that we're gonna have to deal with or, or have to be addressed. The advisory, the, the knowledge in this town is, is huge. But we also have to have it directed. I believe we need greater management of the committees. We need to go, first of all, as councilmen, they need to go out and be connected with the communities and know what the communities' needs are, rather than go out and say, go find what the needs have to be and have the committees report back. They need the committees being tasked with specific objectives. So then people that have those skills can be part of the committee and be working towards a goal that will actually go to fruition or find a solution that will be acted upon, rather than just general recommendations. I believe that we need to really tap into the internship potential at the college. Town administration, whatever we, the, the, the working students, they love opportunities for internship to pad their resumes. That's free talent. We could really use that and leverage that to maximize the resources. I think the town hall has actually done an amazing job on a tight budget for years with minimum staff. I think that they need help to get, do some of the mundane things so they can actually focus on the day-to-day. They should be commended on what they've been able to do with the, the labor that they have and the praise. But they need help and we've got a massive amount in town to help them.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Before we close out the forum this evening, we wanna give each candidate an opportunity for closing remarks. And again, these will be two minutes in duration and limit. And I'd like to go to Robert Miller to start off this, this round.
Thank you. I can view Chester Town from two perspectives. A thousand feet above the ground in my airplane and at ground level. When the sky is clear at a thousand feet, I can see all Chester Town nestled against the winding Chester River, as well as the entirety of Kent County bordered by three bodies of water. The Chester River, the Chesapeake Bay and the Sassergrass River. The beauty of the environment where we live is breathtaking. But when I see the words on College Avenue, we can't breathe while flying at a thousand feet. I'm reminded that not everybody at ground level enjoys the same Chester Town experience. We all have perspectives and those perspectives should be honest. Nobody has a special claim on reality or truth. Every person has a perspective that deserves respect. It's called humility. The opposite of humility is arrogance, which claims that only one person has the correct perspective. It makes sense that everybody has a perspective, but in a disagreement, perspectives are held as a one-sided wall, even though we know walls have peace on them. Since there is division in America, there is division in Kent County and Chester Town. Whoever is elected to join the town council in Ward One and Ward Three will be challenged addressing the many perspectives traded on each issue presented before the council. Integrity, communication, commitment and leadership will be needed. Please vote to ensure the next town council will properly listen to all perspectives and make decisions on matters for which you have placed your trust. It is certain that not everyone will agree, but everyone should be have, should have a chance to be heard. Thanks to the League of Women Voters, Tim O'Brien, Ward One. Ted Gallo and Jose Madrano, Ward Three. Please vote on November second. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Tim, I'd like to give you an opportunity for closing remarks at this time.
Yes, thank you to the League of Women Voters for, for doing this. And the other candidates for participating. Obviously, two minutes is very little time to get to know us, get to know our actual ideas. We are, should be available out in the community. If you see us, find us, ask us hard questions, give us your thoughts. We're all in this together. We are, I am more optimistic about Chester Town now than I have been since the twelve years I've been here. We are on a full upswing and recovery after this terrible moment with COVID. We need to pull together. We need to make sure that everybody feels that they are, can be heard and have access during this recovery. We sink or swim as a community. Everybody in this community is part of this community. Therefore, we need to address and listen to everyone. Every part of the community is not represented by a single person. Everybody needs getting out and having their voices heard and active in what can make this town better. There are so many generous people to, to help the homeless, to help people that are, that are homeless, that are bunked up with other friends. We need student tutoring. I mean, there is a wealth of volunteerism and goodwill in this town. We just makes, need to make sure that we can rebuild trust and communication and make sure that people feel that they're being given a fair and equal chance to do and proceed and, and have the quality of life or the opportunities that they would like to for themselves and their family. And we need to make sure that families coming here are welcome, retirees coming here are welcome. This is all of the above approach. We are Chester Town and we are strong and we will continue to be, but only if we are continuing to go forward as a community as a whole. Thank you, and I hope that I can see more people and get them out to vote on November second. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Ted, I'd like to give you the opportunity for some closing remarks.
Well, once again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us all. And thank you to everybody for participating. We are right now at what is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for Chester Town. I've got a good feeling that the town is, is on the upswing. Just need to make sure that what we do right now is done the proper way so that moving forward to ten, to twenty, to fifty years from now, we can look back at this as being a time where we righted our course and we took full advantage of this. We talked a lot today about the talents of this town. It's very important that we get the community more engaged, or engaged, as engaged as possible in helping solve all of the, the issues that are, that Chester Town faces right now. And I'll steal someone else's line, but there's nothing wrong with Chester Town. They can't be fixed by what is right with Chester Town. This is a wonderful place to live. And we need to take advantage of all of the wonderful things that are going on here and make people more aware, make people appreciate that they live in a small town and that's got some great advantages. In fact, our community, that our communities and even the town council itself is only but so big. And if someone has a problem, they should feel like they've got someone to get it, that they can go to to get it addressed. And by getting it addressed, they need to actually be able to see some things happen. And going around town, talking to people, a lot of people don't know a lot of what's going on on in town. A lot of people didn't even know there was an election coming up. So making our community feel more involved, using their talents, using their abilities, using just their love of this town to make this the best place it can be, it'll be a very important thing. Because we right now, like I said, are, are, the whole world is before us and we need to make sure that we do, make the right choices right now.
Thank you very much, Ted. And finally, Jose, we'd like to give you an opportunity for closing remarks.
Oh, well, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and distinguished panel, the candidates for participating tonight. As, you know, part of my moving business, I've spent, you know, sixteen years interacting with and befriending hundreds of lives in our community. I provided a service that is very personal, which requires attention to detail, management of personalities, as well as logistics and a deep understanding of people's needs. And I think that type of focus can make me a good public servant. And as a resident of this town, I, I want to give back a little in whatever way I can, you know, contribute to the process. As an immigrant and entrepreneur, I, I feel I can bring a different perspective and advocacy for those who have not previously had a voice in local government. You know, great goals for the future for Chester Town. We, we're in a good opportunity and a good time in history to, to make a lot of good things happen here. You know, increased advocacy for small businesses, especially encouraging minority groups, entrepreneurship in the community. Even establishing maybe a new revolving loan program to, to help support new and expanding businesses. So they're not, you know, turned down at the banks. This, this, this is one, one way we can help them with some of this money that we're gonna be getting from the, from the infusion of, of cash. We should also be able to engage and promote incentivize new and growing existing businesses in the Upper High Street corridor, as well as the Morneck Road and, and townwide. We should always be able to evaluate and revise business conduct procedures for, for better transparency in the process of the business of the town. And we kind of touched a bit about that, you know, and, and some of the questions that some of our residents had. So I think we, we're heading in the right direction and I only see good things in the future for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. And thank you to all of the candidates for taking the time and your expertise and your thoughtfulness in answering the questions this evening. I wanna thank, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I wanna thank all of the candidates for participating and the audience as well. And remind you that the forum will be available on the websites of the League of Women Voters and the town by tomorrow. And finally, and most importantly, please make your voice heard and please vote on Tuesday, November second, for these important positions in the town. And I, I understand that the voting place for Chester Town this year is the Chester Town Firehouse. So please get out and vote, make your voice heard. And thank you all for your participation this evening. Good night.
Thank you.